And welcome to Tuesday, May 11th, 2010 Committee of the Hall meeting. I'd like to call it to order at this time. Madam Kirk, please call the roll.
Councilman Burgess.
Here.
Councilwoman Logan.
Yes, here.
Councilman Martinado. Councilman Shelley.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walden.
Here.
Mayor Bateman.
Here. Deletions, deferrals, Mr. Manager?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Okay, hearing none. Committee of the Hall, let's see, first item, item A, City of Homestead trolley presentation.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council are, Julio, it's gonna give you his presentation on the trolley and then it's gonna be followed by the entrance monument signs. So it's a short one, on the entrance monument sign towards the end of it. The finally awaited so much for it, uh, trolley is coming.
Yeah, trolley's here.
It's here, right outside. Go ahead.
Mayor, Council?
Yes.
Um, well, basically, we're here to present the staff recommendation for the trolley circular that we're gonna do in the city. Basically, what the city's recommending is that we piggyback on our existing contract that one of the cities currently has for operation and maintenance of a trolley system. We're recommending that we piggyback on the Doral, City of Doral, uh, contract, which basically covers operation and maintenance. We are in the process right now, basically, we're one of the cities that is, um, part of a group that the county has put together to purchase trolleys using stimulus funding. However, because they're getting all the cities together in one RFP, um, we have to basically wait for that process to run through. So in the meantime, while we're waiting for those buses to, that contract to go out and actually the buses to be, um, built and us to receive them, uh, we are gonna start, you know, ahead of that. We're not gonna wait for those buses to come because that could take probably six months to a year to get those buses, uh, in our city. So what we're planning to do is piggyback on this contract, which will allow us to operate and do an operation and maintenance of the trolleys and enter into a leasing agreement for two trolleys while we wait for the two that we're purchasing. In doing that, we can save time and just move forward, which is what we wanna do. We are in the process, uh, the agreement will come to you at a special call, I believe it's next week. We will bring that to you. Right now, the attorneys are, are just looking over the existing contract right now, just to make sure that everything's good and we'll bring it for your approval at that time. The idea is that within three weeks to have the trolleys in the city running. That's what we're, that's what we're planning to do. If we can go to the next slide, I can just show you, well, that's basically what the trolleys will look like. We saw one outside, we, um, that is the size that we're thinking of using, you know, that's, uh, the ones that we purchase are also that size. So basically, it is the, what they call the classic trolley design, which the interior is wood interior with brass, so it has that antique feel to it. It's not, it's not a converted bus. It's actually, it actually in the interior, it looks like a, like a real trolley, which, which is the look that we're trying to, to, to use within the city.
They're diesel, diesel, right?
Uh, diesel, yeah, diesel, yeah. These are diesel. Um, if you go to the next slide.
Can I ask questions?
Sure. The next slide is basically, we're, we're coming up with routes. We basically have two routes that we wanna start off with. One is basically in the Chrome area, which will run literally a loop, uh, going through Chrome and on the north and south by Fifteenth Street and at the south, Sixth, uh, Street at the south, Fourth Street, sorry, at the south.
Excuse me, ma'am. Could you come up and actually show, 'cause we don't have a PowerPoint, I guess, but...
Yeah, this is Chrome here.
So that people can...
So, this is the, one of the, one of the routes that we're proposing. Again, these routes, we know they're gonna change and it's gonna be based on demand. As we start using the trolley, we're gonna see which stops are more, more, uh, yeah, you know, people wanna use more than others and we'll make a decision as to, we might remove some stops, add some other ones. So that's all gonna happen as we grow with the system. The first route that we're thinking of doing is, basically is in the, in the downtown area here and it'll go along Chrome. On the, on the south side is bordered by Southwest, uh, Fourth Street, go up Sixth Avenue and basically finish the loop on Fifteenth, Fifteenth Street. Again, the idea is to stop at all the, all the major areas along Chrome. We wanna make sure we stop at several spots, whether it's restaurants, et cetera, on Southwest Fourth Street, the same thing, and up Sixth, Sixth Avenue, again, the many, the main, the main streets and avenues, uh, we'll put stops there. Again, the idea is to correlate our stops with the county stops as well, so that people can get off our trolley and into our county bus if they need to continue going further someplace else.
Mayor? Yes. All of these stops are already county stops in, um, is where?
Some are and some aren't, you know, we, there's some that are, like the major ones on Marion, Six, uh, you know, Chrome, those are, and what we've done is we've added some other ones where we think there's gonna be some, some demand for them as well.
Um, are we gonna have, obviously, we'll have signage there. Are we gonna have benches, trashcans? Because I know on the east side of town where the, the county came down and dropped in all these new bus routes, we've been fighting a headache, not just there, but throughout the entire city, where people take the, um, push carts, turn them over and use that or milk crates or whatever, and, you know, the county is oblivious to whatever requests we make to them, so I wanna make sure, uh, that we're not gonna, that we have the proper things in place also when we start this, whether they be temporary until we find out, I know that you're talking about changing the route or whatever, but I'd hate to see the same problem start on that side of town, so I just wanna make sure somebody's thinking that, you know, out with either benches, trash receptacles, or whatever we're gonna do, because I know I've been fighting over there to get stuff.
Correct, and, and actually, next council meeting, I'm gonna bring forward, um, a bus bench proposal for, for the council to, to...
For the city stops, right?
Exactly, for the city stops, yeah. And, and we can also do it within our city, we can also do it on county stops if we wanted to.
And build them back.
We, we would, we will basically take care of them. That's how it would go.
This, this will be our stops. Whenever they don't coincide with the, with the bus stop, with the day county bus stop, we will have our own sign, bench, and receptacle.
Correct. And that's what'll be coming up in the next, in the next council meeting.
Mayor? Yes, Mr. Rams. Um, through the chair. Yes, sir. To Julio, um, what is the timeframe on each stop? I mean, how many times would it lap, uh, complete, what's the timeframe?
Well, that's something that we're going to, the number of stops that we have here are, you know, we're, we're thinking that we're probably talking, uh, a waiting period of about a half an hour between pickups. But again, it all depends as we start doing it and we see how people use them, 'cause if people aren't stops, the trolley keeps going and it won't make a stop there. So that will work itself out as we start running the system, we'll be able to, to, uh, put up more accurate schedules. And when I get to the, there's a couple of slides forward, I'll show you what, uh, what the stops, what the trolley stop sign would look like, which is like this, and it would basically have the information for the schedule and we can just slide it out, change that schedule, depending on how the demand is, et cetera.
If I may, Councilman, uh, I would, just for our, um, understanding, I would not go beyond twenty minutes on any given stop. So what I hear about is we need to time it so that it's not gonna be on fifteen, twenty minute stops. I, I believe the one that I initiated over there is tops, uh, twenty minutes at most that anyone can wait at any given point, and it shouldn't be more than that.
Is it the same geographical, like, area or the same kind of route, you know, that we're...
It's similar, yeah, it's similar, it's similar. And again, we'll work with the stops to make sure that, that we meet those criteria, so...
Now, another question. Where's the chair?
I'm in your chair.
Okay. Chair is gone.
I'm looking for candy up there.
Um, question, what is the primary purpose of the trolley? Is it to, you know, could you give us some concrete, you know, is it just burning gas and we just ride around and, what is the, give, give me something that I can understand that, what is the, the concrete purpose of the trolley?
The idea of the trolley is to basically augment what the county is doing with their transit system, but to make it, uh, more, um, more focused to the residents of the city. 'Cause the county has, you know, their stops are very far apart, their, their frequency might not be what we need. So the idea is to facilitate transportation within the city, by the way, free of charge. It's, we wouldn't charge for, for our trolley, which if you go on a, on a county bus, you would have to pay for it. So it'll be free of charge and the idea is just to facilitate local traffic, local, uh, transportation of the residents. That's why I'm saying that the, the stops might change as we see people need and we'll get demands, you know, we'll put out, uh, you know, questionnaires asking, hey, do you want us to stop at the Publix, you know, do you want us to put a stop? And the idea is to, to, you know, to basically curtail our design to meet what the residents want. And, and take more local, more local than what the county's providing.
And in addition to that, uh, based on what I've seen happen before, uh, it, it helps greatly in taking off the road, a lot of the traffic that you'll see during peak times, because, um, students use them. If I had it set so that it links rest, main residential areas, heavily dense residential areas to, uh, schools, and so the kids hop on the, on the, on the trolley in the morning and they just save their parents a trip. That's a one less car or two less cars that you have on the road during peak hours. And not only that, but also ties residential areas with the busway and, and other facilities that we might have, and, and people might take advantage just, just to come around here and, and pay the bills if they have to, you know, so...
Oh, thank you.
One more question, ma'am.
Yes.
Madam person. Um, what are the hours of operation that the trolley starts and what time and what time does it end?
Again, we'll, once, once we decide exactly where we're gonna stop, we're gonna put out, uh, a flyer with all that information on there. Right now, we're, you know, we're, we're gonna work it on weekdays for now, but again, as the demand grows, we may extend the hours, you know, after five or af, or, you know, even into the evening, so we'll have to work that out. And like Sergio was saying, if, if we add schools to the, to the stops, then we may have alternative routes where, like in the morning, one trolley's doing one particular route, but then when it becomes part of pickup time, it might change to address those needs. And that's why, you know, the type of stop sign that we're putting at the, at the, at the bus benches will be the type that we can switch and, and change as, as we see the demand call for one, one type, one stop or another.
And we can insert this, this, this new amenity into different menus, venues that we have, like events during racetrack, racetrack, uh, we can go back and forth to, uh, parking facilities and advertise the city in, in some other way, so...
Question.
Correct, that's, that's another good point, that we, we can also use it when, during off-hours, weekends, when there's events, et cetera, we could use it to promote transportation to and from particular events, and we would have maybe some park and ride where people could park in downtown and, and go to the races or something, something like that.
Mr. Williams, Mr. Burgess, and then I'll turn it back over to the chair.
As, as you talk about students, I, my mind starts going and I get the liability of the kids. Do we have an age limit that kids are allowed to ride this without a supervision? Who becomes responsible when there's fifteen, um, high school kids riding home and they get into a fight and things like that? So I don't know if these things are being thought, if there's a process, if there's a plan or what, but I wanna make sure that the city's not held liable for somebody getting injured in the back of the bus because students are riding it and we don't have the correct supervision or whatever is necessary.
No.
So just things that, I have questions, and then will we make it so that a six-year-old kid can't get on it and ride it, you know, and then misses his school and then somebody comes to the city and says, hey, what the heck is my kid doing riding the bus all day when he's supposed to be at school or he got lost and didn't get off at the right stop in Little Johnny's, at King's Highway instead of somewhere on South, uh, Fourth West Street or wherever?
Yes. We'll come back to you.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure that we, we cover that.
Thank you.
We'll go back to the other...
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
And this is another, go back to, to the next one. This is another route that we're thinking of doing, which is basically along Campbell Drive, finishing at the hospital and coming back to the downtown area. Again, and it would pick up, it would also stop in front of the Miami-Dade Community College. So it would have those type of stops, and in, in between, we could make it stop at, at different shopping centers, et cetera. Again, based on demand and need, those could change and we would adjust it accordingly as, as we grow with the system.
Can we go to the next one?
And this, this is the, the stop that I was, that I was, that we were talking about previously. Basically, it'll be the type that we could adjust as, as we see fit, uh, you know, uh, modifying the schedule as we need to, based on demand. Okay, that's, well, that, that was the last slide for, for the trolley. So, um, so just to, to, to wrap up, um, the attorneys are looking at the contract right now, which is what we're gonna piggyback on. Actually, the, the president of the company that, that does the service for, for City of Doral is here now. They also do it for many other cities in, in, in the state of Florida, so, so, um, you know, we know that it's gonna be successful.
Got a question. So the funding is coming through the original source of, of, of pot of money, so to speak, that we're using to build our trolleys, correct?
Correct. Well, no, actually, the trolleys, the ones that we're, that we're building are from the stimulus funding. Uh, the, the operation and maintenance of these trolleys are gonna be from the, from the half penny sales tax, the PPP.
Okay. Which we'll also use with our trolleys.
Correct, yeah, actually, they're, but it's two sources, yeah, two sources.
Any further questions on the trolley? Thank you. Move right on into the, into the City of Homestead entrance sign presentation.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The colors, will be able to pick the colors of the trolley?
We can, we can talk about that now if you like.
Oh, sure, let's, let's...
Yeah. Whatever, pick color.
Well, I mean, I just wonder what the deadline was for, for, you know, we're doing all this, so we wanna move forward and...
Well, I, I think with the, the lease, it's whatever colors they have, right?
Well...
What we, what we build, we can paint what we want.
Correct, well, you can actually, you can actually modify the, the colors.
The lease?
The lease?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, whatever. We, we start with, it's the, the city colors that you have in your, in, in your, the green, the hunter green color, and then a gold.
I have a recommendation.
Okay.
Instead of having the, the orange, you know, the green, I think is our signature color, I mean, you know, to me, that's our signature color, but I like the lighter yellow, the, the yellow instead of the orange, I think...
Kind of a goldy, goldy yellow.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
And not orange.
No, no. No, no.
Perfect.
How are you?
Good.
Yeah, and it'll match our signs and...
Okay.
Sound good. Any further questions?
It will be consistent throughout with the rest of the signage systems that we're trying to institute throughout the city, that you'll see coming next.
Okay, any further questions on the trolley? All right, hearing none, moving on to the City of Homestead welcome signs. Mr. Brea.
All right, um, basically, what we wanted to bring forward to council was, um, some options as to, as to entrance signs in the city. Um, what you see there in the, in the screen is basically two models. The one on the left-hand side, that was the one that was, um, basically approved by the previous council. That's the, that's the one that, that the city was gonna move forward on. The one on the right-hand side is what staff is recommending that we, that we use for entrance features in the, in the city. Basically, more of an antique look, again, to match with what we're trying to do regarding the, you know, the old, old time, old, um, you know...
If we're gonna go old time and we're trying to look at heritage and we're trying to look at antiquey, then somebody better figure out how to paint that tractor back on that insignia right there, because that is the heritage. I mean, it's a whole nother issue, I realize that, but I hear it a lot on a regular basis.
Mayor Bateman?
Yes.
Under our marketing, um, which I think that's what I am, marketing committee, um, and tourism, um, that was gonna be my first item of, of interest, so, um, hopefully, I'll be having that meeting within the next week, ten days, and I'll bring it back to the council. It won't be this Monday, but, uh, even at a special call, we could bring it back, and I agree with you completely. Thank you for mentioning that.
Mayor, Congressman.
Yes.
The one, the problem that I see with the set, with the, um, one on the right, which staff recommended, is Homestead to me is not big enough. It welcomes you, is gigantic, and, and sure, but where, where the heck are you welcomed to? You know, unless somebody gets slowed down, you know, if, if somebody comes by it, they're not aware, in, in my eyes, they're not aware where they are. Just my observation.
Very good.
Yeah, I have the same observation, I was gonna bring up the same thing. And I wasn't sure whether or not the actual, if we were just voting on the, the sign as far as the, the look versus the actual wordage, but, but I have to concur, I mean, we need, definitely, if we're gonna go with that route, Homestead needs to be a focal point.
Absolutely, well, we're just, we're looking for direction on the look, and then what we can do is come back with, you know, even, even the wording that we put on there, we might wanna say something else, you know, we might, might wanna add another sentence on there or make it bigger, smaller, but basically, that's the, the look that we're trying to, to, to move forward with, I guess.
Well, it, it doesn't look, personally, it doesn't look as rich as the one that, you know, that's got the small Homestead on it, just, it looks like a cheaper version of the sign, in my personal opinion. Uh, that one looks very colonial, very stately. It's my two cents. Thank you.
Really, we're, we're, we're open to any recommendation. Uh, if you want us to bring more alternatives, um, I actually had the designers, they sent me a bunch of hand-drawn sketches of all different types, some that were very modern, you know, but all different types. Basically, they just drew it by hand, showing some perspective views to see, you know, if we liked them or not. We could bring those as well, if you, if you wanna look at a more, um, you know, more choice and, and see if you see something else that you, you might like.
Well, you can Pine Crest, Palmetto Bay, Doral, they all have very, very attractive signage. I think it's, it's important that we, we maybe spend even a little bit more time figuring out, yeah, figuring out what we really want for the City of Homestead.
Yes, I, I agree with you also. I remember we voted on this three years ago and it was, well, approximately three years ago, and at that time, I was told we had eight, eight spots, and then eventually, somewhere down the road, I was told that these monument signs had been made, they just hadn't been put out there yet. Whatever happened to the monies that we put up for all that? And, uh, I thought the city spent money on these already and that, that some of them had been made, is, is what I had been told by prior administr, uh, prior staff.
Well, from what I know, nothing has been made. Uh, that, that was, um, basically handled by Development Services, they were the ones that were doing the, the, actually, the, the design and all that regarding the, regarding the signage. I know that the design was done, the drawings were, were done. That we do have, uh, but outside of that, nothing has been built and nothing, nothing moved.
But then, we paid somebody, did we ever pay anybody for these, uh, signs and, and the time where we paid?
No, with the design.
Or the stuff already?
The consultant was paid for the design. The, the sign that you see on the left-hand side is, um, you know, concrete block design, so they're not prefab, they basically build them on the site, you know, when, once they were gonna be built. So there's nothing that was pre-done that I know of, there's, uh, nothing has been done on them, other than the actual design was on up.
There's only one difference that if, if you decide to go with that one, with the previously approved, is that, uh, some of the structural requirements have changed for that type of signage and they need a breakaway point at the, at the base of it, so structurally, if it's, if the wind blows or if it gets hit, it, it has a point where it, it breaks and, and it doesn't, the, the foundation of it doesn't lift with it. So, but it's just a structural change that needs to occur. Other than that, is, you can, we can...
And that's basically to avoid if a vehicle runs into it, it'll break away and, and be less, less dangerous.
Okay.
Yes, Mr.... I'm sorry, you wanna finish, John?
Just one, if I could, just one quick question, I guess, then to Ms. Woods from the Development Service. Do you ever recollect anything, um, being made? Because I was told that these were made already and, and were out there somewhere, so I'm kinda bewildered when it was brought to me tonight, that I just thought they'd been stowed away in a, in a warehouse somewhere and never been put out, for whatever reason.
Um, Mayor, Council, no, I had not seen these until this week.
There were a number of projects that were housed in that before, man, and it was...
Well, it's, it's, it's the head of that department, I wanna know, I want some answers from the head of that department, but anyway, no, I agree with the mayor, though. I'm, I'm, I'd much rather prefer the one on the left than the one on the right, as I did several years ago, so, thank you.
Mayor Bateman?
Yes.
Um, I, I agree completely. To me, the, the, the left is so much more rich and beautiful and inviting and, and I'm just gonna throw this out here, 'cause I know what, I know the concept with the, um, with the, um, pedestal heads on the, on the, on the, the right-hand side, which, sorry, sorry, which matches the, um, trolley signs.
Correct, correct.
You know, it matches it perfectly, and the, um, streetlights. But what we could do in a monument sign is, it's so hard for me to do this from here, but, but, but as it, as it comes out, you know, on, here's the arch, and as it comes out, we could actually place two lanterns there with the light directed to the sign, still keeping it all, um, fluid with, with bringing in the street lighting, the trolley signs, the, the, all the signs that are in Homestead. So actually, we could keep that sign and just do the lanterns on top and make that like a burnt, um, um, an antiquey color instead of, um, you know what I'm talking about, like a wash.
Wash, yeah.
Instead of, did you take ceramics too?
Yeah.
A wash, so that, you know, you have that beautiful antique looking...
Copper patina or something?
Yeah, and then put the lanterns on those, on the two landings there that would actually light the sign, and I think that would, that's just my opinion, but I think that would just be gorgeous and it would tie everything in.
There is only one, one thing that we would have to check, and that's with, uh, we would have to check with DOT to make sure, we could put the lights in front of the, like, basically hanging from the columns, may, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause if you put them on top, it could create, um, a visual...
Well, that's okay, as long as it's on there so that we can still tie in the...
Correct, to, to give it that antique.
Continuity.
But I'll talk to the designers about that, but that's one thing that the, DOT doesn't wanna put lights on top.
I like to think of the idea.
You know, like blind somebody, you know, who's driving and, and those type of issues.
But I think that would be rich, very rich.
Soft yellow, yeah.
I mean, these lights would be lit also from the bottom, we would have floodlighting coming out of the ground, again, that would light the, the sign at night, so you would have that, but we could look at putting some access lamps on, on the columns.
Just to bring continuity.
That, that would...
Yes, Mr. Williams?
Mayor, can I offer one suggestion?
Sure.
That we allow the Tourism and Marketing Committee to get together, forgive this to the committee, to the work, and then bring it back as a finished product for us to look at. Um, because, uh, I think that'd be a great project. I, I think that's my suggestion on that.
Can you do that in thirty days?
I'm sure, I'm sure that Madam Vice Mayor can convene a meeting of the Tourism.
That's it.
Uh, I, I move that to, uh, we move that to the committee and come back to us.
Good suggestion. My, my recommendation would be, I like the one on the right, 'cause it ties into all of our other lighting and all of our, our theme that we have here in the city, but I also think that the left, one on the left is, is a more grander, more, you know, it makes a statement when you come in, but, but I think maybe if we can combine the two, and again, I know we're on a timeframe here, but, you know, I think that maybe rather than pick one or the other, you guys, like, like Councilman Williams says, blend it together in some form or fashion, work on it and bring it back, because I think something between the two is probably maybe the best... Because I think something between the two is probably maybe the best solution.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I move that we send this to the tourism and, uh, marketing committee.
Okay, well, it's just a recommendation, so...
I accept.
Okay.
I do.
Anything further on it? Any further questions, uh, on the sign presentation?
Just, just one recommendation. If there is an anticipated change of the logo, let's make sure, uh, we don't go one step in front of the other and have these made and then have a logo changed, so...
Well, good point. Mayor, can I ask the attorney a question, please?
Sure.
Do we, does this even have to go before a committee? If we wanted to put it on the agenda for Monday night to bring the tractor back, can we just do that without having to go through a committee so that...
Move on to the next one, let me check the code, see what it says about the logo and I'll...
So that way, we wouldn't have to wait and do it Monday night.
Okay. Any, any further questions before we move to item C? Item C is really just approval of minutes. Hearing no further questions, item C, uh, April thirteenth, two thousand and ten minutes.
Move it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, thank you, Ms. Vice Mayor. Uh, questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Okay, item passes. Next item, uh, item D, professional service agreement. Mr. Manager?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, my Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This is, um, a, a professional service agreement with Delma Luna. Uh, she's a former employee, then later in, last year, became a consultant. And the reason that this came before you is because, um, it, it was under the twenty-five thousand dollars that we were able to retain her to provide, uh, the services outlined on, on, you know, my memo to you. But in this instance, I know, in order to appropriate her over to the next year, we need to, um, I needed to come to you because obviously exceeds, you know, the, it goes up to thirty-seven thousand four hundred and forty, which would be paid by the enterprise fund. Uh, Delma, she, Delma has done a, an incredible job. She has, um, through her efforts, um, identify a, an excess of four, and a lot of money, um, that has been, that we have been able to, had not been able to collect, and we're pursuing that now. Uh, she continues to do that, and, and I think it's worth every penny.
Okay. Well, let's, let's get a motion and move it forward.
I'll move it, move it second.
Second, thank you. Um, all right, uh, comments, questions, John?
Just through some meetings that I've had with the manager and Mr. Estrada, um, I think somebody like this, uh, is needed over there. There's been a lot of missed billing opportunities. Um, some cases go back as far as ten and twelve years, people have been, uh, uh, missed, for whatever reason, in the billing cycles over there. And, uh, as we've seen, the one lady came here with a, a six-hundred-dollar bill, or approximately six-hundred-dollar bills. So how many of those people are out there, you know, and if, if, uh, the number that they've told me is correct, there's a lot of people out there. Um, and I won't put the number out there, but it's, uh, it's a big, big number of missed opportunities that the city's missing. So I think that, uh, she's needed and, uh, and will do us a great job if, uh, if we so move that way tonight.
Mayor Bateman?
Yes, please, Vice Mayor.
I've been having, um, three- to four-hour weekly meetings with, um, customer service, Jerry and Barbara, and, um, I can tell you that there are over eleven million dollars on the streets, and, uh, about four-point-six million of that money is current money that's just been billed. Our goal has been to collect back six million dollars over and above the four million dollars that, um, is out there, just regular billing. Um, I, I welcome this very much, because we could use all the help we can get. We've already made great strides, and I plan on doing a workshop, Mayor, and bringing forth, um, the customer service and the electric, uh, electrical, um, utilities department, so that we can tell you all the wonderful things that we've been able to accomplish just in the short few weeks that we've been meeting, and Christie's been there with us, and, and we've really made great strides. I, do you agree, Jerry and Barbara? So, um, so I welcome this help, and it'd be great.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any ayes? Motion carries. Next item, Finance Enterprise Committee, Councilman Williams, Washington Avenue Street Improvements. Uh, so move?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Mr. Manager?
Um, yes, um, Mr. Mayor, my Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This item came before council back in October of oh-nine, um, and then, uh, the project moved forward. This is basically just a, uh, an oversight, should've been brought to you before. Uh, and it's just, um, a formality, just to make sure that you, that you see it before you continue.
Are these, is this, this pertains to some of the improvements that have already been done?
This, this pertains to the improvements that were done on Washington, that have been done on Washington. Um, and, uh, and we expect it to be done by the end of this month. So, again, it came before the council and, and we needed to come back, uh, for, you know, for your approval.
Okay. Questions?
Yes, you said that it, it came before the previous council?
Correct.
And you're bringing it to us for what?
Um, this is, this was money allocated, it was through City VG, uh, allocated for this project, and it needed your endorsement.
Okay. Uh, yes.
It, it went before the CRA board, and it was supposed to go also to the council, and it didn't go to the council, it was, uh, that's what it was.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brea. Okay, any further questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Carries. Next item, Public Safety Committee, Department of Children and Families Stop Grant. Uh, motion to move forward, hear it?
I move it.
Okay, thank you, second, thank you. Staff report?
Uh, this is a very simple reoccurring grant that we have, uh, um, that is assigned to the SOS project with our police department, and it covers the funding to provide for the salary of, uh, one detective for the domestic violence, violence program and, um, and contractual victim advocates that we hire. Um, there is a twenty-five percent match, and, uh, that will be made by the detective supervisor and the salary of twenty-five, uh, percent of the, of his time. It's, um, that's, that's pretty much it. The, the budget impact is outlined in, in my memo.
Questions?
It's just a recurring grant.
Thank you. Questions and comments?
Is this, uh, yes?
Yes, please.
Yes, uh, is this the, uh, the salary piece? Or is it something else that's attached to this? Is this, is this the full?
This is for the salary piece, and...
Does it include overtime?
And the advocates that work, that are assigned to, to the project.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Item carries. And next item is, I want to turn a motion to a adjourn. Excuse me, please. Please. Your staff?
First of all, I wanted to get back on the, on the, uh...
Tractor.
There's certainly nothing with, with having a resolution on the agenda to, um, add back the tractor. On the, uh, the actual, the seal is provided for in the code, but the logo is something that the council can change from time to time. I even remember when there was a race car in the middle of that.
Oh, that's from the race?
That son, yeah. It was a, it was a race, first it was a tractor, then for a while, it was a race car. It was there. Um, and then the other thing, I wanted to request an executive session in two cases. One's called Jason Williams, which is a police liability lawsuit from a shoot, dealing with the shooting. And Betty and Stephen Betty Wade versus City of Homestead, which is automobile accident. Those are being handled by, uh, Derek Stett, who got us a very good result in a recent case. I'm sure the manager forwarded it to you, got an excellent result in a very difficult case.
Okay, council?
Yes, please. Yeah, I just wanted to, um, state for, I'm on the newly-elected pension board, and we currently have a vacancy. It's supposed to be a three-person board, and there's only two people on it now. So I just wanted to make the announcement for the council. If you have anybody that you wanna recommend, I assume they recommended to you, Mayor. I'm not sure how procedures, how that works, but we do need to fill that void. So I wanted to let everybody know, and then I'll announce it again at the council meeting so that the public can apply as well. The all requirement is they have to be a resident of the City of Homestead. Um, no other requirements to serve on the board. But obviously, a, a knowledge and financials would be helpful.
Um, and, and Mr. Churney, you may need to advise me on this, but, um, we need to form our charter review committee, and I believe that committee, uh, the members have to come forth through the mayor, the mayor recommends. So I would suggest if anybody would like to serve, I know I have a couple of names that I'll work through the manager or the attorney with that have asked me about it. So if you would please, um, turn your name in. Do we have a limit as far as how many people could be on that committee? Is it seven?
Seven, I believe.
It's not a board, it's just a committee. So...
In, in the, if I could, just in the past, people, I know that some administrations, they worked through, everybody got to pick one person. Is that something interests you, or...
Um, if, if, if you'd like to recommend a name to the manager, then, then I'll work with the manager, and then we'll put forth a recommendation to the, to the mayor, and, um, and it'll be the mayor's final say. Is that all right?
That sounds good.
Mayor?
Mr. Williams, yes.
Question on that. Is that, uh, it's an open meeting, is it open for other council people, or is it just, um, citizens, or...
I'm looking for the provision now, just, why don't you go in with one of the reports?
Well, actually, I'll, I'll, I'll say this. I know that, um, I've, I've heard Mr. Williams speak before, and I know he's very interested. So if he would like, with mayor's permission, if he'd like to co-chair this with me, as, um, last year, we had a chair and a co-chair on the charter committee. If he'd like to be my co-chair, that'd be fine with me, if that's all right with the mayor.
Okay, thanks, bye.
Yeah, sure, just give you the thing you want, you want, I...
I'm sorry, through the chair.
All right, this one. All right, any, anyone else?
Yes, I have it, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Um, okay, it says in the first regular meeting in December of every fifth year. So this is not a, a, one that goes along with our normal charter, it's just a...
No, it was not.
It's an interim charter review committee.
Correct.
So because it's an interim charter review committee, there's no, there's nothing in our code or in our charter that restricts you in any way. Uh, you could do it as a committee of the whole, you could have two council members, you could have no council members, but there's no restrictions at all as to, uh, the composition of that committee, or, and they're not under any sort of deadlines or anything like that. So you have complete freedom as to how that committee would work and be appointed.
But doesn't it say, though, that it has to be, that, that it's appointed to the mayor? Somewhere I read that.
Yeah, all, you mean, all committees, um, of the council. Uh, members of city boards and agencies get appointed by the mayor, and then also council committees get appointed by the mayor.
So then, this, this is all right, Mayor, then I'll work with the manager and the attorney, and, and anybody's welcome to put forth a name of recommendation, or they can... Is there any restriction as far as residency? Does it have to work with the same way, has to be fifty-one percent?
You know, it's gonna be, um, set up as a sort of a, just a ad hoc committee that should be governed by our ordinance that requires a majority to be city president.
And also, we need to know what the deadline is to get this, if there are any changes, they need to be brought forth. We need to know what the deadline, drop dead date is to get it on the ballot in November.
Well, one of the things that's, that we've been doing in some cities is that there's a new provision that we've, have used a couple of times, which allows these things to be, I don't know if you want to, but if there is an option that you could do it by mail, a mail ballot. That way, there's no expense to the city to have a special election, and you're not constrained by any other state. Now, that's up to you as to whether you think that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I just wanted, did wanna present the options. If you use that option, there's no deadlines. Um, as to other options of getting things on the ballot, I think you could, uh, your clerk could get that information from the Dade County Department of Elections.
All right, and then we'll make a report to the mayor.
Any further questions? Okay. Mr. Standager?
Um, I just wanted to, no, just one note. Um, reiterate something that you all know already.
Mr. Williams, again?
Julio Brea is, uh, my new assistant city manager. I just wanted to announce it publicly.
Thank you, I was gonna announce it, I started saving it for the council meeting.
He's done a great job all these years, so I'm sure that it's gonna get better from this one for us.
Here, here.
I'm looking forward to it.
Now, we have two of you to look to when that project's...
Exactly. Thank you.
Oh, what, what about our new city clerk?
Exactly, today was the first day.
So, oh, happy birthday!
I mean, the first meeting.
Oh, your birthday. Happy birthday to you.